We'll go ahead and get started. It's nine o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September Board Meeting of the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees. Like to go ahead and call it order, and if I could get Mr. Foster to do the invocation for us this morning. Everybody stand, please.
Gracious Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunities you give us each and every day to really touch others, to change others' lives. We thank you for the opportunities of the staff and the faculty. We pray that you will bless them and keep them. And the students, we just pray that they will continue in this environment of learning to thrive, because that's our purpose here today, is to help them thrive. Father, be with our military personnel wherever they are, guide, protect, and keep them, and be with this country and its leaders. It's crazy out there, and we don't understand all that goes on, but we know that we are in your hands. Your will be done. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just one point of order. We will, as we go through the board meeting this morning, we will be, after the board meeting, we are going to have a workshop. We will adjourn the board meeting after this and have a collective bargaining workshop, just so everyone knows. It's open to the public. I guess everyone who wants to stay around can to listen, but that will take place right after the board meeting this morning. Preliminary matters, presentation of retirement resolutions. First, Gary Graham.
Wow.
Stand right here. Dr. Gary W. Graham began his career at St. Petersburg College in 2010 as a career outreach coordinator following a highly successful career in private industry. And whereas Dr. Graham's first challenge was to serve as liaison between the Perkins Grant team and the advisory committees to all of the college's AS degree programs. And whereas, Dr. Graham assumed additional duties in 2012 when he was named Director of the Florida Trade Consortium, a statewide group of 12 colleges, state and local manufacturing associations, and local career source boards, as well as more than 350 Florida manufacturers. The consortium was awarded a $15 million federal grant to develop training programs leading to national industry certifications, articulated credit-stored associate degrees, and jobs in advanced manufacturing. And whereas, Dr. Graham's leadership resulted in the following consortium accomplishments: more than 2,500 program completers, more than 2,250 students who earned at least one industry certification, at least 770 students who completed academic credit towards a degree, and more than 920 unemployed workers placed in jobs. Now therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and to the community by Gary Graham, and extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College this 20th day of September 2016. Here, here.
Well done. Thanks. You've been a great contributor. Okay, thanks. You get that, okay. Do we have a photographer? I don't see one. Nope. Okay. Say a few words if you'd like.
Just a few. I would like to start off by thanking Dr. Law and Dr. John Chapin and Jackie Skrid for giving me the opportunity to lead the Florida trade team. It's been an honor and a pleasure to do that. And I also want to announce that we're now up to 957 jobs that people have been placed into throughout the state of Florida. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary, come on.
Awesome.
There we go.
Thank you. Good work.
Jenny Orama.
Nice to have you here this morning. Glad you could be with us. Good Lord, who's mine than a star?
Oh, thank you.
Whereas Mrs. Jenny Orama began her St. Petersburg College career in 1990 as the first student activities coordinator at the Health Education Center. And whereas, Mrs. Orama soon added pathways coordinator to her job description, and later added project coordinator for the Single Parent Displaced Homemaker Single Pregnant Women Program. And whereas, Mrs. Orama created the HEC Book Lending Library and Uniform Exchange Program, which continues to operate successfully today. In 2013, she became the college's first career outreach specialist. And whereas, Mrs. Orama has passionately and diligently worked to assist underrepresented populations achieve their academic dreams, she has represented the college at numerous community events, and has served on advisory boards for Pinellas County Schools ESOL Program and the LPN Program at Pinellas Technical College. Now therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community do hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and the community by Jenny Orama, and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College this 20th day of September 2016. Here, here.
What a nice resolution. What a nice thing, okay. I'm very proud of you. You get this. Let's do a picture first here, okay. There you go. All right, say a couple words.
Well, I always think that I'm really blessed because I've had a wonderful journey at SPC, along with a lot of wonderful opportunities to learn different things. And I've met some wonderful people. I have established some fantastic friendships. And the students, I have experienced so many things with different students, and they are really in my heart. And I'm going to carry those memories out to the next chapter of my life. And for that, I am very grateful. Thank you.
All right, moving into recognitions and announcements, the Florida College System Foundation presentation. Have a number of names on here. I don't know who the main speaker is, but Mr. Furlong, Mr. Lang, Mr. Cologne, Mr. Kouris, and Francis New.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Law members of the board. Mr. Cologne is not here yet, but we look forward to starting the presentation unless you would like to. Bralio has not arrived yet. Would you like us to continue?
I think, I think we need to go ahead and do that.
Okay. Each year, the college receives support from the Florida College System Foundation. This has been going on for well over a decade now. The relationship represents the partnership with Florida Blue, Bank of America, and the Helios Foundation. We are very fortunate to have with us two people who were instrumental in establishing this partnership, which leads to this annual contribution. And it gives me great pleasure now to introduce to you two faces that you're very familiar with, Dr. Tom Furlong and Mr. Joe Lang.
Thanks, Francis. Pleased to be back again this year. And Joe is now our Foundation Board Member Emeritus, and still very active with us, though. Let me say a couple of things about these awards, and I have two guests here for brief comments. The Florida College System Foundation will award more than $893,000 in funds to the 28 colleges throughout the state this year. The scholarships are aimed at relieving nursing shortage, other allied health, and helping students through our first generation in college. This year, the St. Pete College Foundation will be receiving from nursing and allied health, $15,524 from Florida Blue. For first-generation scholarships, we will receive $25,680 from Helios Foundation, $5,128 from Bank of America, totaling $46,332. Florida Blue, as I said, is nursing and allied health. Scholarships have been awarded since 2006. Last year's scholarships served 778 students statewide. 20 nursing students here at St. Pete, and I've got Florida State on my brain for some reason after that defeat the other day. St. Pete, and I'm from there, but I'm still suffering. St. Petersburg College has received $143,000 in student scholarships since its inception. Helios Foundation are for first-generation in college students, very critical to a community college. Scholarships have been awarded since 2007. Last year, 545 first-generation students, 10 here at St. Pete. And Helios has been generous enough to give us $217,000 since inception. And finally, Dreammakers Scholarship Award. This is the gift from Bank of America. Scholarships, again, for first-generation in college have been awarded since 2001, and we have received $43,345 from Bank of America. So on behalf of the Foundation Board Directors, glad to present these checks. Actually presented them about a month ago to make sure we got all the interest, and so they're in the bank. But we wanted to recognize our partners here and Joe's work. Today, I'd like to introduce Nick Kouris from Florida Blue. Nick is, for the past 10 years, Mr. Kouris has served as the Regional Business Development Manager for Florida Blue, one of our outstanding partners. Nick, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, and good morning. I will keep my comments very, very brief. I know you're all very busy. Just a few numbers. We've been supporting this program for over a decade. I've been with the company about a decade. When I started, we were supporting Generation RN, and this was the nursing program that sort of morphed into this program. $30 million, over $30 million in those over a decade, and 4,000 nurses graduated. So very proud of that. We're going to continue the sustained support for this very important initiative. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As a former trustee of a local college, I'd like to make sure that our trustees are aware of something I'm very proud of. The foundation is about 17 years old, and in that 17 years, it's been scrupulous about avoiding any interference with potential donors to the local foundations. And as a result, St. Petersburg College has received in excess of $400,000 over that period of time collectively. And to the best of my knowledge, none of our potential donors have changed their giving from that. So I'm very proud of what the foundation's done.
Thanks, Joe. Joe, and the early members of this board have been really careful about how we raise our funds, so we don't get into that competition, and it's worked out very well. Our other guest is not here, Bralio Cologne from the Helios Foundation. He's the Vice President for Florida Student Initiatives for the foundation. And Bill, when he comes in, you know.
We'll recognize him. He's a good friend, sure.
We'll recognize him when he comes in. So thank you. Thank you very much, and appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We would like to get a quick photo op, if you don't mind. Dr. Law, Mr. Chairman.
Wheel over. I'll go ahead.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
Too much transition time.
That's right.
Ted?
Thanks. Thanks for being here. My pleasure.
All right, move into the comments section. Briefly, for me, I'd like to congratulate all of the retirees, the two that were here today, as well as the three that are not attending today and kind of moving into this phase of their life. And then also, I don't know how many had a chance to attend the debate last night with Representative Jolly and Governor Crist. I think they did a really nice job among the three sponsors, which we were one of those, in Channel 10, as well as the St. Pete, or the Tampa Bay Times, I'm sorry. But a really nice event. David, nice job on that. And any other comments from any of the other board members? Ms. Westine?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I just wanted to add, I had the opportunity to attend last night, and I really thought it was absolutely fabulous. And I'm going to be a little bit of a sticky-wicket this morning. Last month, I had asked that the matter be continued, and this board went out with Florida and voted on it. It was something that candidly, I probably would have ended up voting with you once I'd had the opportunity to get my question answered. But I wasn't given that opportunity. I sit on another board. Been doing it since 2009. I have never, since 2009, not voted to continue a matter that another board member respectfully had requested we continue. I confirmed this morning that, to date, the only thing that has really occurred is a getting-to-know-you meeting and some contract work. I just, I remain committed that if any one of you ever wanted something continued, I would be happy to do it. You know, we use lots of fancy words towards each other. We call each other colleague, and I get a parking space out front. But at the end of the day, really what matters is listening to each other and respecting each other. And I certainly didn't feel that way when I found out yesterday that this matter had been voted on and decided. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Thompson, any comments?
I too would like to commend everybody on the debate last night. I thought St. Pete College had a great showing. Palladium had a great showing. It was a great event. I'd also like to highlight, I was out on Seminole campus, is Provost Mark here? Mark, stand up, Mark, please. I know Dr. Law and a bunch of your bosses have given you a lot of challenges. I was out on the campus, and I can tell you, it feels like a different place. I mean, a lot, I walked into Financial Aid and some other places. He's doing a phenomenal job. He didn't even know I was on campus. He didn't even know today I was going to say this. But I just walked around, and I saw a lot of new faces, a lot of new people doing a lot of new things. And he should be commended for it. It just feels like a whole different place. And to Ms. Westine, I'm very sorry. We were, as a board, we tried to think about what your questions may be, and had staff try to answer those questions. I don't think anybody had the intent of not, of wanting to hold it up, but we were under the impression that we had to move forward to get certain things done, as we thought the contract would have been done by now, and some other things. As far as, so far as even knocking some things down by now. So we had no intent on trying to offend you. I know that was not my intention. I'm just going to tell you the truth. So I'm sorry about that. But we really did have a long discussion last month about asking staff, you know, what were the minimum requirements, so on and so on. Did they see anything? These folks probed me a little bit, and Dr. Law, about, you know, what we saw. So I do want to apologize, but that was not our, not my intent. And I'm sure it wasn't anybody else's either.
Mr. President?
Yes, first of all, let me add my congratulations to the event last night. Some days, this is what good colleges do in their community. They provide opportunities for everybody to come together and to feel good and proud. Secondly, let me take a second. We had the meeting of all of our advisors. I think I mentioned it last night, but I want to take just an extra minute to recognize the work of Dr. Cooper and her staff to put that together. But we had upwards to 500 people in the Carolyn Hilton last week. These are civic leaders, business leaders, who give time to each of our business, our workforce programs. It's very rewarding to get their take on how we should be doing and what we should be working on. And I think they feel the lift. Their guidance has not gone unresponded to. We are making great progress in many of the workforce areas. So I want to pass along those comments. Today's a busy day on campus, by the way. We've got this meeting, and then we're going to have a separate meeting after this one. The chancellor will be here, and their statewide webinar on performance funding is going to be, we're going to be in this room, but they're going to be next door broadcasting from the facility here. And then this afternoon, we've got the Higher Ed Coordinating Council, which is a sort of an intermediary council between all of the sectors of higher ed. And they're meeting out here today. So a good day for St. Petersburg College. Mr. Chairman, that's good enough for now.
All right. Just, I would like to respond to Ms. Westine's comments, and in line with Mr. Gibbons, I do want to apologize if you were offended on anything that took place last week. I think, you know, our intent was to try to move the issue forward. We had staff up, had a full discussion about the process, and it was our understanding that we needed to move forward to get the contracts done and to begin the work at Gibbs. So there was no intent to sidestep or offend you. I just wanted to put that on the record. I don't have any public comment cards, so we'll move on to the next area, review and approval of the minutes. So in your board packets for this week, you'll find the minutes of the August 16 meeting. Do need to take a motion on that.
So move, Mr. Chair.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Monthly reports from the board attorney, Mr. Lang, any updates?
Nothing to report.
All right. Our general counsel, Ms. Gardner?
Good morning. Nothing to report.
Thank you. All right, moving into the strategic focus and planning section of the agenda, student success and achievement, the online revitalization. Dr. Clark?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Law. I'm Susan Kaleric. I'm the Associate Vice President for Online Learning and Student Services. Last month, Dr. Coraggio and Dr. Renard presented on who our students are. Today, I'd like to focus on who our students are in the online environment. Looking at headcount, our students are pretty evenly distributed between the different instructional methods. Thirty-five percent of our students take classes completely face-to-face and on our campuses. Thirty-two percent take them online, and 33% take a mixture of online blended and face-to-face. On opening day, our enrollment for full-time students online increased by 10%, with student credit hours increasing about the same amount. We were wondering if students choose online when they cannot get an on-ground campus class. But you'll see that the enrollment trends for online indicate that students choose that method of instruction right from the very beginning. So the trend follows the same line as that of the on-ground students. During the first week, which is our drop period, students in the online environment drop at a slightly higher rate than face-to-face or blended. Online headcount follows similar trend to campus-based courses, with continuing students and readmitted students increasing, and new students slightly decreasing. Looking at first-time in college students, we see that mostly the students take classes on campus. So they are beginning their process with us on one of the campuses and then moving online. Full-time online-only students are only about 28%, with part-time students at 25%. Online headcount by degree objective is similar to that of our campus as well. Online headcount by ethnicity again follows a similar trajectory for on-ground students, with the exception of black students where had, there was a slight increase among online students. Online headcount by age shows that the groupings that grew a little bit were the 19- to 21-year-olds and the 26- to 35-year-olds. An online headcount by gender reflects, again, our campus-based enrollments, with 62% of the students being female. You can see here that we do have a wide geographic distribution, although the depth is not as very much. 99.8% are Floridians, but we do have students from a number of different states and 12 students internationally. Within Florida, as you would expect, the majority are from the Tampa Bay region, but we do have students in 62 out of 67 of the Florida counties. Headcount by enrollment status shows a slight increase among full-time and part-time between last year and this year. Again, looking at online, lower and upper division, it is similar to our campus as well. So we're not seeing a lot of deviation between our campus students and online, with the exception that online has increased a bit over the year. We took a look at our online baccalaureate programs, and this is student semester hours. The numbers in red indicate the online presence, and the numbers below are the on-campus by baccalaureate program. We are very focused on retention efforts so that those students who are in the online program are succeeding. We have a special outreach for first-time online students in Week Two to let them know of the support student services available to them. So we do provide online tutoring, online workshops, career services workshops, and we want to make sure that the students know of those services. We're also building some soft skills into the My Courses support so that information is there at any time. This includes things like test-taking strategies, study skills, and time management. In conjunction with online enrollment, we're working on some outreach efforts earlier in the term to make sure that the students are ready to enroll in the next semester. And we think the guided pathways in the Spark Program will help as well with retention efforts. And of course, with revitalized courses, we're very focused on retention, and we're looking at the statistics that come out of each of the revitalized courses to make sure that we are increasing retention and success rates. These are some of the comments that were pulled out of the Student Survey of Instruction for some of those revitalized courses. Do you have any questions?
I do. How do we market to the, our outreach, or where we touch is very impressive. How do we market to get those students? I think I saw 11 in California.
Yes. It's an interesting balance, because we want to make sure, first, that we're supporting the Pinellas County students and meeting the needs of the community here. But word of mouth is really our best way among students who are currently enrolled, asking them to reach out to students who might be interested as well. So we're going to begin a formal campaign on that, a refer-a-friend type of program. So we want to make sure that we are first meeting the needs of Pinellas County, but then we are looking at where we're having success already and reaching out further.
Obviously, you've done something right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, budget and finance, the monthly financial report. Ms. Hunt?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, board members, and Dr. Law. This morning, I will give a presentation on the monthly report as of August 31, 2016. First, we'll look at our revenue. And starting with our tuition, we're at $23.1 million, which we're at 41%. We're about 3.6% down in our enrollment, so that reflects in this revenue percentage here. Next, we have our state appropriation, which is our community college program funding. We're at $8.6 million, which is at 17%. We receive this money coming in in 12 equal payments. Our lottery state appropriation does not start coming in until February of the following year. And then our performance funding starts coming in in about August, so you'll see that. Then we have our student fees, which are coming in at 40%, which is in line with our 41% of our tuition. And overall, our revenue is at 24%. So our target percentage would be about 26% at the end of August. Next, we'll look at our expenses. And so overall, in our personnel and benefits, we're at a 14%. We typically see in our administrative, career, and professional categories where we have a little more lapse than we normally have with our instructional. And then with our adjunct supplemental, we're at 6%. We have not had our first pay of adjuncts up through August, so we'll have that first pay in September 15, which is about $1.4 million. Then the same with our current and capital expense. Usually, at the beginning of the year, we've already pretty much done our prep in summer for our fall semesters, so we have a little bit of lag in our expenses for current expenses and capital. So overall, current expense at 14%, and our capital is at 15%. And then we, in our fiscal year, our month, I'm sorry, at $14.9 million, which is our revenue over our expense. And the green line represents our fiscal year 1617. So I mentioned that we have our So, I mentioned that we have our enrollment decline of three point six. Next, we have Mr. Brian Miles that'll give you our budget plan and go into more detail of that.
Thank you, Jeanette. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Law. My name is Brian Miles, and this morning, I'll be giving you a short-term plan for your consideration. This plan is to adjust our budget based on a few factors we're seeing that are currently impacting our budget. And Jeanette just mentioned the first one, that being a three percent enrollment decline that we're currently experiencing in Fall 2016 and that we're projecting may happen for fiscal year sixteen-seventeen. The other two factors that we are currently experiencing include an increase in expense in student tuition waivers and also increased expense related to our health insurance program. And in just a few moments, Desiree Warner, our Director of HR, will give you more details about the health insurance program and some of the changes we propose. And then, in November, December, I'll be back with a more comprehensive, three-year financial plan for the college for your consideration. The first part of this plan really starts with our performance funding dollars. And as Jeanette just mentioned, we were awarded three point six million this year. When we met with you last spring to propose our budget for the year, we mentioned that we expected to receive this three point six million and that we would allot one point eight million of those funds toward restoring our base amount. In other words, the institutional investment that SPC makes in the state's performance funding program. We also said that we intended to use one point one million to fund new initiatives related to our strategic priorities for the year, and that we would allocate seven hundred thousand toward our health insurance program and stabilization reserve, our revenue stabilization reserve, which you see in the budget each month. That would have left a zero balance on these performance funding dollars. Now, as a result of those three factors that I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, we intend to change our budget just a little bit. This is not an item that requires Board approval, but we wanted you to be aware of it. Using those performance funding dollars, we'll restore half to the base funds. We will fund four hundred thousand toward new initiatives that complement our strategic priorities, down from one point one million. And then, we intend to take one point four million of those performance funding dollars to help our tuition waivers. Just so you're aware, and we had some discussion on it at the last Board meeting, we fund approximately two point nine million in tuition waivers annually. We currently budget one point five, so there's a shortfall there, and we'll use these dollars to plug that shortfall, bringing us to a zero balance on these performance funding dollars. The second part of this budget plan looks at offsetting the anticipated loss in tuition. As I said, we're projecting three point six enrollment, three point six percent enrollment decline for the year. That's based on what we're seeing currently in Fall 2016. What we'd like to do to recapture or offset that lost tuition is to reduce our travel expense. Currently, the college budget's six hundred thousand in travel. We intend to reduce that in half to three hundred thousand. The college's current expense for the year is about thirty-five million. We will reduce that current expense college-wide by a similar percentage to what we're seeing in the enrollment decline. And so, that will total at about one point one million. And then, finally, we'll apply a salary lapse that we have realized of about eight hundred thousand to bring the total balance to three hundred thousand. Now, in just a few minutes, Desiree Warner will tell you that we intend to use this three hundred thousand to help our health insurance program, but that's what we intend to do to offset that one point nine million dollars in tuition decrease that we're anticipating. If we get better news in Spring 2017, Summer 2017, then certainly, we can adjust again. But this is to take immediate action on these items that we're seeing. And again, I'll be back in November, December with a more comprehensive, three-year financial plan for the Board's consideration. This concludes my presentation. What are your questions? Yes, sir?
Mr. Miles, the, can you go back a slide?
Sure.
The, okay, reducing travel by three hundred, not a lot of risk in doing that. When we talk about reducing current expenses by one point one million, is, have we looked at the risk of, you know, kind of what we're looking at either deferring or reducing and what the risks of that is?
We've had several meetings with senior leadership at this time. We've considered the risk. All the Vice Presidents have weighed in on what they feel the risk would be to their divisions. So, yes, that has been considered. What this translates to is probably about a three point eight percent cut college-wide for all the divisions, all the departments. We felt that that was the most uniform way to approach this, and we received buy-in from, as I said, the senior leaders.
And the salary lapse, I assume that's just vacant positions or?
That's correct. That's a savings on-
Funded but vacant, yeah.
Funded but vacant positions and also benefits that we save by not filling those positions immediately.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, you answered my first question. I have one other question on the tuition waiver shortfall. There's something like two point nine million dollars worth per year. What does that encapsulate exactly, and is there a way to back off that at all, or does that affect too many, too many students?
Both. We are, just to give you an idea, we have about twelve or fourteen types of tuition waivers, whether they be for veterans, seniors, Department of Children, families, athletic waivers. We have a number of homeless waivers, a number of waivers that we give out each year. Some of those are driven by statute. And so, we need to go back and look at how the statutes are being interpreted by our college to make sure we're not being overly conservative and giving out more than we need to. We certainly want to continue the tuition waiver program. The question will really be to what extent. We're aware of the increase. We're looking into it, and perhaps in future months, we'll be able to bring back a better report on what that will look like.
It's a fine line to walk. I agree.
It is.
The answer to your question is, they're almost all legislatively mandated, one at a time. And we woke up one day, and they were all bigger than we had planned for. The Veterans One is of the most recent vintage, and proudly, we do a great job for veterans. So, guess what? We have a lot more Veterans waivers. We pay the Dreamers, we pay the out-of-state portion for the students who are here and the Dream Program. It got bigger than we had anticipated. And you wake up one day, and you only have half of it budgeted. So, that's, we're trying to get right on that issue now, so.
Mr. Chair, I only have one question. Mr. Miles, the three hundred thousand in reduced travel, well, is that going to hurt faculty getting training or going to any type of training that they may need?
No, the faculty will still be given the allotment that they receive of fifteen hundred dollars every two years for their professional development. This expense goes more toward how we're funding people to go to conferences. Rather than looking at conferences on the West Coast of the United States, we may look closer to home. We may send fewer people than we've been sending in the past. Just a conservative way to approach this budget issue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Yeah, I got it. And I know we're going to talk about health insurance, but health insurance is one of the enrollment decline, health insurance, tuition waivers. Where was the part about transferring monies for three hundred thousand health insurance? Where does that fit into the reducing the strain on the budget?
Well, the strain on the budget is partly impacted by what we're seeing in our health insurance program, Trustee Foster. And as you recall from the last Board meeting, we had a fairly robust discussion on what we're doing with the health insurance program. Desiree Warner will provide more detail shortly, but in essence, we're projecting a million-dollar shortfall in our health insurance this year and one point five million next year. This three hundred thousand will be set aside to help us bridge the gap in the one point five million dollar shortfall next year. It will be a small piece of it. Changes that she will propose today will include six hundred thousand to a million, and then, we plan on taking the balance of that from our cash reserves to bring that to a zero balance.
Guess what I'm getting at? Because I kind of, I studied this, and I looked ahead at the health insurance discussion, and you're proposing a modest rate increase in that, I believe I read that correctly. Why not more? I mean, I know what I pay and what others pay. Why not?
Can I, let me answer. Brian and I have had this discussion. We, in fact, Brian, let's go ahead and get those charts up there so everybody has the right information in front of them, okay? You know, we were bumping along with no increases. That's the chart I'm looking for. Notice, we were able to manage the total claims. Everything was moving in a groove. Then, all of a sudden, it jumps by eight and a half percent. So, the million-dollar increase came out of the college's reserves. So, we had six million dollars or six and a half million dollars reserves. We stroked a check to pay for it out of the reserves. Now, this year, we've got to do something different, though. It's headed toward a million and a half. The discussion that we had was, let's not try to make it all back at once. Don't move it because, quite frankly, we may have to do it again in some future year. So, let's see if we, let's be sure we know what's causing it. We have a slide that shows thirty-nine percent of the increase comes from high-dollar claims that we've had, an extraordinary number in one year that have driven that way up all at once. Well, why don't we wait to see if that's a pattern or if that's a one-time event before we start dinging everybody for more? So, we wanted to get the ball moving. We had to make a change. We've been without changes for three years. We needed to make the change, and the proposal was to see if we couldn't mitigate the impact on employees. Everybody knows, everybody wants to do the same thing, but we've got to get it under control financially. The goal was to put money into, I mean, we're putting more college money into the plan. Three hundred thousand dollars is what we're saying. In fact, we had anticipated putting seven hundred thousand dollars in. We're now putting three hundred thousand dollars in, and then, you know, a slight increase in monthly premiums and some changes in the way the plan is structured.
It's still a good, it's still a good solid plan. It's still affordable. We can still cover, cover the claims going forward. I understand that. Getting back to the budget plan, salary laps, hiring freezes, overall reductions departmentally, that's all good, but I don't think it's going to, it's going to get worse, I think, before it gets better. And so, I think we just look at it for the long haul. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I think we all agree with Mr. Foster. Our goal, though, is to, the plan we're adopting is pay the price now. Do not kick the can down the road any longer. If we see a problem, we're going to address the problem. If we need to cut the budget, we're going to cut the budget. If we need to make changes, we're going to make changes in real time so that we're not falling further behind, and then it gets away from you. So, that's what you see, the approach that we're taking here.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Next, moving into administrative matters, in your board packet is the Human Resources Personnel Report. Need to take a motion on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, in spite of the budget discussion we just had, are all these positions absolutely necessary for conducting the mission of the college?
Yes, sir. What we do each week is, when we have a vacancy that is coming up, we discuss that at the Executive Committee level, and so, we give a report of how that vacancy occurred. Sometimes, it's through a transfer to another department, and then, the Senior Vice Presidents will propose to us the need for that area. Discussion occurs, and then, it's decided that we can move forward, or if Dr. Law asks for additional information, he sometimes does that. But we do carefully review all vacancies that we fill.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, the health insurance plan, Ms. Warner?
Okay. I am here today to follow up to last month's presentation where we proposed multiple recommendations that we would bring back today after we looked at those further. And so, we've spent some time in the last month, meeting with our consultants multiple times. We've met with our Insurance Committee, our Career Service Council, our Executive Committee with Dr. Law, and keeping in mind that we want to make sure that the expenses that we have going forward would be reasonable for our employees, but also that we were making some effective plan changes that would help us with bringing our plan more in balance. So, what we are proposing today, again, is not going to bring us to a zero deficit, but depending on the utilization, the enrollment, and how we move forward in the plan, we do see that these changes should be effective to help us mitigate that. So, again, we've just looked at this slide where we've seen the trend that since 2012, we've been relatively flat. We've not had to really have any problems with our employee and employer contributions on covering our claims. But of course, going forward to 2016, with our increases in our high-dollar claims, we are going to have some shortfalls there that were already discussed for 2016 and 2017. We're going to talk about how we're going to address those shortfalls. Ms. Westine wasn't here last month, so I just wanted to recap the trends. We still have our top conditions that we're focusing on, which is the high blood pressure, high cholesterol, and diabetes. We are looking at our wellness budget to focus more on those diagnoses over the next year to really help those employees mitigate those health concerns. We also wanted to look at what's happening with our high-dollar claims. So, we've looked at other colleges across the state. We are trending a little higher in that area. We have over twenty claims that are over fifty thousand dollars. We have five claims that exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, those do make up thirty-nine percent of our total claims. Our membership demographics is pretty stable with our fifty-five percent female, forty-five percent male, and then, our average ages are staying about forty. We do have a movement to our high-deductible plan because our new employees, that's the only choice that they do have, so they are moving into that, and so, we can send you to see a growth in that area. Now, retirees were a surprise this year. We didn't anticipate that we would have an increase in the retirees' pharmacy because last year, we had specialty medications that were on the market to help with curing hepatitis and those kinds of things. But actually, what we see this year is that we have more inpatient utilization for our retirees, and so, they've actually realized a two hundred and fifty-six percent increase over last year. So, we have some recommendations for changes in that area. So, we did talk about the projections of what those increases would mean on our budget, that we will, of course, in our current year, are not able to make any plan changes because we're already in the year 2016. And so, we are planning to cover the one million dollar shortfall with our cash balance. Our cash balance right now is six point five million, so that will bring us down to five point five. And moving forward to 2017, again, we were looking at, from the cash balance, of contributing five hundred thousand and trying to make up the additional million in plan changes. Through our back-and-forth review of our plan ideas, we came to around six hundred and seventy-seven estimated million. So, that three hundred, I'm sorry, three hundred, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, and that three hundred thousand we were talking about is in case we don't actually realize additional savings. So, it's hopeful that we won't actually have to use the three hundred thousand, depending again on utilization and how the employees enroll for next year. So, if we could, I wanted to go ahead and bring up some of the details because I think it'll be easier to follow what the recommendations are, and then, we can go back and summarize. So, if you can go to the next slide. Currently, the way we have our contribution structured is by salary categories, and so, what we're proposing, this is what we have currently, we have those per plan and then divided into- We have those per plan and then divided into those that you see there up to 25,000, 35,000, and so on. So, the next slide is where we're making our, our proposed changes. What we are proposing is that we have an increase over all plans of $10 per month. So, all employees would receive that $120 annual increase in their contribution. In addition to that, we will be adding some additional salary category, which is the plus 65 range. So, you'll see that we have 65 to 75, 75 to 85, and then 85-plus. Again, wanting to look at how that offsets our expenses. And then, in 2018, if we need to make some changes there, we certainly can do that. But, we wanted to leave ourselves some room. And the Medicare, sorry, the retiree section, we have the pre-65 and the post-65. Now, they, they were having about $340 of a premium per month. And we are proposing to increase, increase that to 500 as the single, and then increasing upward from there. So, I think the most that we have on that is $200 of an increase on the family plan. So, with those proposed changes alone, for that category, let me just go back. Those two changes would affect about $228,000 in offset of expenses. So, if we can move forward to our next category of recommendation. This is what we have as far as our current plan. And when looking at our plan, it, we had opportunity to only affect what we pay in pharmacy. We thought it was important to keep our deductibles, co-pays, the same at this point, and then focus on the pharmacy where we're seeing some uptick in spend. So, if we could scroll down a little bit. So, the gray areas represent the changes. So, currently, the employees pay $10 for generic, the $20 for brand, and then $35 for those specialty medications. And we're proposing that we would continue the $10 generic, but increase to the brand and the specialty at 30 and 50. So, by doing that, we would realize about $84,000. So, if we could move forward from that. The other area where we see that we have significant spend is in our dental. And we spend about $1 million in dental. And one of the considerations was, okay, well, we can just possibly not renew the dental. However, it's a very valuable benefit for employees, as well as it contributes to the overall health of our employees through the, getting the dental treatment. So, what we've been able to do is create an alternative plan where it's not as rich, but it will be at the same cost to the employees. So, our current plan that we have is a 90-10 plan. And that pays 100% for preventative, and then 90%, you know, for your fillings. And then, as you go down into the higher expenses like bridges and orthodontics, then those tiers change to the 60-50. What we're proposing for our alternative plan is that it would be an 80-20 plan, and then also that it would be 50% on, on those more expensive procedures. The other area that we focused on, on the dental, is the non-network provider, because we are seeing a lot of utilization there. So, if we have our employees go out of network, there'll be a higher penalty for that. So, we're hoping that we can create savings by driving them to the appropriate providers. So, if we could, please scroll to the next. So, what we're proposing is keeping, again, the plan the same as far as the out-of-pocket for our employees, but offering them a different plan, and an option to buy up to the current plan. So, some employees will still, will have two plans that we would offer, but it would be more expensive to stay in the current plan. And so, through that, we believe that we would be able to estimate 150,000 offset in, in expenses. The other piece, which is not on this particular slide, is that we're proposing to implement prior authorization in step therapy. And what that is, is prior authorization for those specialty medications that come on the market, where we already know our employees are being treated with our brands, less expensive. We're gonna ask that we get prior authorization on that. What we are going to do is make sure, though, that we work closely with our, at an insurance company and the employees, so that they are getting the treatment that they need. And we're gonna be monitoring that change throughout the year. Another area of proposal is that we are considering some stop-loss increases. And so, if we could go back to the PowerPoint. So, just a summary of recommendations here that we've just gone over, a couple of, two more items on, on this. Is that our stop-loss is right now 350,000. And we already know that we have five claims above that. And so, we're looking right now, what would it mean for us to lower our stop-loss down to the 250 range? We've estimated that by doing that, it would save us approximately $100,000, but we're still getting bids, and we're gonna be evaluating that for January. So, again, just a recap. Increasing the salary contribution tiers. $10 across the board for all plans for the employees. Increasing the retiree contributions. Increasing the co-pay for our prescription medications. Reducing our dental coverage and adding that buy-up option. And then, the prior authorization in step therapy. So, with those estimated changes, we would have around 677,000. Again, that would be our minimum expectation. So, we would have to monitor that throughout the year to see how that might actually get us to the million that we're looking for. And, one piece of information that I did want to share is that we have historically paid about 4, 84% of claims as the contributor, with the employees paying 16. With these changes, it changed, it's about a 2% change. So, it would be 82% that the employer would pay, and then the 18% for employees.
Can you explain to me what stop-loss is?
A stop-loss is what we have as far as the protection for our plan, so that when we reach a claim that hits $350,000, it will pay. It's a catastrophic insurance, basically, for our self-insurance plan. And what we are proposing to do is lower that level to 250, because we're seeing a lot of expense in, in that area.
Do we have a maximum lifetime amount that this insurance pays out?
I don't think that we do. I'll, I'll need to double-check that. It would be risky for them not to have that, but we have not.
Haven't reached it yet?
Yes.
It's probably a good thing. What is, to me, 82-18 still seems low. With that said, I'm not proposing increasing. But, what is the industry standard for employer, the percentage that an employer pays versus an employee paying?
We are seeing that other carriers are doing about 85, the 84, 85. So, we are lowering, you know, we were.
Right there.
Yeah. But, we also, we did look at the other plans. They, they do have higher co-pays, higher deductibles. But, we've been able to offset that with our careful planning and not having a reduced enrollment. And so, this is our first step in several years that we've actually had to make these changes. So, we really wanted to be conservative.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Can I add? One of the things that, that doesn't appear here is, we've been very aggressive with the providers. You know, we've locked in our provider costs through the, the 17-year, and we, we've done that in advance. So, we're not fully at the, the response to the market as it's changing very rapidly because of whatever's happening in, in insurance. So, you know, our goal all along has been to, to keep our health insurance as steady as we can while the market sorts itself out. It, it can't keep doing what it's doing at 30 and 40% increases and, and all of that. We're trying to keep it for all of our employees as, as, just as, as controllable, help offset unanticipated costs. And then, we hope for a better day in, in the open market, some, something that would make life easier for everybody, I hope. But, right now, this is the plan we're on. It's good insurance, by the way. People, I think, feel supported by it. Aetna's done a good job managing the, the responses. So, we, we will continue to continue, if, if you're comfortable.
Did we get hit with any of the compounding? I know that there was, for a while, there, there was a trend for physicians to recommend compounded prescriptions that were considerably more expensive than others. Did we get any of that?
Yeah, mostly, it was the, the hepatitis was our big one, and it was a cure. And so, it was great that we had that opportunity, but it was very expensive. And so, we were tracking that. We thought we would have more this year, but that's not what we saw. So, we are preparing for that trend again next year. But, again, that's why we're putting in that prior authorization, so that we can make sure that that's actually needed for the particular diagnosis. We want our employees to be healthy, but we know that there, sometimes, those new medications are, can be solved with something else. We are looking at doing multiple campus visits to communicate with our employees. And we're going to be providing them with information about what these changes mean. We have been working with our insurance committee, and they've asked for things like, can you tell us which medications we can get for free? And so, we're gonna come up with some strategies to, to really go out and market, and try to get our community educated on how to help them reduce cost as well.
Thank you. It's obvious, you, obviously, you've done a lot of work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, under this proposal, the average cost increase for current employees is approximately $10 a month, or $120 a year, correct?
Correct.
And then, for retirees, what was that number?
The number is, it ranges from 160 to 200. And, from the.
Per month?
Yes. And we are careful with our retirees, because, of course, they are on fixed income. We know that that still doesn't cover the cost of their treatment. We got an estimate that was, if everything being equal, that it would need to be $1,600 a month. So, that, we didn't want to approach. But, we think that this will at least offset those expenses, although we know that it's going to be a challenge for our retirees, and we plan to spend some time with them as well.
Any other questions?
How many retirees do we have in the plan? Pre-65 and post-65?
We have 73.
Total?
Total.
Post-65, is that just a Medicare supplement?
Yes. Yes, sir.
When I look at this, this, if I look at the, read the chart correctly, if my salary's over $85,000, I can insure my entire family for less than $300 a month, correct? It's pretty good. So, yeah, just, I guess we'll keep studying the, you, you will keep studying the numbers and the tables and see where adjustments need to be made. But, this is a great plan. And I wish I qualified for the plan. I don't, but maybe someday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. And I think we need to take a motion on the summary of recommendations, so that we can move forward with this.
So, move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Well done, Desiree.
Next up, Mr. Wechter, the Green Living Demonstration Center.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Law, I'm Jim Wechter with your facilities department. And I'm accustomed to enjoying the opportunity to stand before you and talk about projects moving forward and progress. Unfortunately, today, it's the contrary. I'm here to recommend that the best interest of the college would be represented by actually terminating a contract and stepping away from this project. And I'd like to give you a little bit of history. About 10 years ago, Pinellas County government, under sponsorship from Congressman Bill Young's office, applied for a $475,000 grant through the Department of Energy to build a Green Living Demonstration Center. That grant was applied for, again, in 2007, 2008. It was awarded to the county in 2009. As the county got into the project and started learning and doing some preliminary designs, it became obvious to them that the project was not feasible within the confines of the financial picture. At the same time, they were talking to the college about maybe locating the building at the Seminole campus. Moving forward about a year, and Dr. Oliver had, had, Provost Oliver at the Seminole campus had conversations with the county ongoing. And we opted, but in 2011, to ask the county to approve a novation of that grant to the college from the county. We subsequently applied for it through the Department of Energy. That grant was then awarded to the college. Re-assigned a novation from the county over to the college in 2011. So, we began the process of seeing how feasible it might be. People have come, people have gone. Obviously, Congressman Young's passing did not help the process at all, but we got Congressman Jolly on board soon after he took office. He approved continuance of the project. Move forward to 2015, we did the selection process that we do for all of our projects, and we selected Skanska Corporation to serve as a design-build contractor. So, we've been working with Skanska since early this year on the design-build of a Green Living Demonstration Center. They presented their schematic design to us in early August. And the financial contribution of the college, which was a $200,000 match, $475,000 in grant, $200,000 in the college. The total construction budget was to be $675,000. Our contribution at the schematic phase that was presented to us grew from $200,000 to $763,000. We were quite surprised, we were taken back. We convened a meeting in Dr. Law's office with the principals from Skanska Corporation, Provost Strickland. And we decided at that time that the feasibility just did not fit within the college's perspective. And we are asking at this point, rather than to move forward, to step away from this project, terminate our contract with Skanska, and move forward amicably. I can tell you that the, the meeting that was held with Skanska was very professional, very amicable. We will leave on very good terms. Skanska's a great company, they've done great submittals on projects. And we look forward to continuing entertaining work with Skanska in the future. We have, in the past couple of weeks, touched bases with all of the interested parties. The city of Seminole, Pinellas County, the congressman's office, the Department of Energy, as well as Skanska and all of their sub-consultants. And we believe that everybody is on board. We still have a little bit of documentation to deal with, obviously, through Jackie Skridt's office in the grants department to wrap this thing up. And I ask for your consideration at this time.
Any questions? Is there a termination fee of any sort?
We do not anticipate any fees, and we have not drawn down any monies from the grant to date.
So, that's what was my question. So, we don't owe the government any money back?
No, ma'am.
What are we out of pocket?
We did some design guideline, some specifications. We, we had a consultant come in before the grant was actually awarded, or the, the process was awarded to Skanska just to put some guidelines together. It was $22,000, $23,000. We have not received formal notification, I keep checking my email this morning, from Skanska, that they do not intend to bill us for services rendered. But, all of our conversations indicate that that is where we'll end up.
Have we offered this back to the county? Have they shown any interest?
I spoke with the county administrator's office last week. As we all know, that, that person changed roles here a few years ago. They didn't know anything about it. The person who actually applied for the grant has since retired. There've been a lot of people come and go over the course of this long period of time. And I have, I have had those conversations. I have not yet heard back from that. But, we'd certainly make it available to them, should they be interested. I cannot imagine. They were happy to get, they were happy for the novation to go through back when it did.
I would, I would, as far as I'm concerned, this is not in our mission of student success. And I tend to kind of stay laser-focused on that. If I'm gonna spend money, I'm gonna put it somewhere where it helps our employees or our students, period. I would make a motion to terminate this, provided that we get a written response from the county that they do not want this back, and that they don't have 763 grand somewhere that they want to spend on a greenhouse somewhere. But, but my concern is, is that this grant was theirs. So, if they want it back. But, I, but as far as, my motion is, I agree, we terminate the contract. But, I would just like, in writing, that the county doesn't want it back. Because what I would hate to see happen is.
Absolutely.
Four months from now, we've lost the money, government's now spent it somewhere else, and the county all of a sudden decides that they have BP money, and this is where they want to spend it.
Fair enough.
Do I have a second?
That was a very long motion, I'm so sorry.
Got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Mr. Wechter. Moving into academic matters, credit curriculum changes.
No, it's, these are the normal range of credit guidelines.
Right. These are a couple of ad hoc program changes, only three. And then mostly they're course changes that are being modified or improved upon due to our three-year course review and our online revitalization. And then we also have the material from our Workforce Institute and their courses.
As I always remind you, I asked to bring this to the board so that you can see how much work we put into the curriculum. It's an ongoing task to keep the curriculum up to date, focused on industry needs. The deans and the faculty do a great job of adjusting the major learning outcomes and the way we structure these courses. This is a good deal of work that goes into this, and I'm very proud of all of this.
Any discussions or questions to Dr. Cooper on the changes?
You have a motion.
Have a motion?
You have a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Workforce and professional development curriculum changes? Same thing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Perfect. Strategic priorities, quality enhancement plan update, Dr. Haber and Ms. Roberson.
Good morning, members of the board, Chairman Oliver and President Law. I am Heather Roberson, here joined by Dr. Jennifer Haber, and we are here to give you an update on the progress of our quality enhancement plan development. As you may recall from previous updates, the development of a quality enhancement plan, or QEP, is part of our Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges' Accreditation Reaffirmation Process, or SAC COC. Per SAC COC guidelines, the QEP will focus on a singular topic that will impact student learning and be sustainable by the institution once implemented. For almost a year, we've had over 58 faculty, staff, students, and alumni that have been working on refining our topic focus, beginning our research, and starting to write our plan, which will be submitted in a little less than a year from now in August of 2017. As you may recall from our update in May, our topic focus is college readiness for long-term success. What we are incorporating are non-cognitive skills, which may include things like self-efficacy, study skills, academic ability, grit, persistence, and how improvement in these areas impact cognitive abilities as demonstrated in the areas of information literacy skills. Our data examination determined our most at need student population to be our flexible opt-out students, which are students that come to us needing developmental placement due to Senate Bill 1720. They were able to self-advice and go against the recommendation of developmental placement and enter college-level courses underprepared and lacking that academic foundation to help them with their long-term success. We would like to focus on these students, reaching them early in their first 15 hours to provide them with this foundation of support and a network of mentors. We would like to do this through the learning communities model, again with this network of support, with faculty advisors, actual advisors, peer mentors, also our tutoring advisors. And we would like to have this be an accompaniment to our career and academic communities so that we can reach these students where they need help the most, to provide them with that solid foundation for long-term success.
So I get to tell you the fun part. First of all, it's the research and development and the stakeholder engagement. So we have a quality enhancement committee that Heather referred to. We have been meeting with this, this particular committee for about five months and doing a lot of work. We have established some very important subcommittees. Our three research subcommittees are our Learning Community Subcommittee, our Non-Cognitive Skills Team, and our Information Literacy Group. Our Learning Communities Group is head by Carol Weideman. She is a math faculty here at the college. And we have found that, that learning communities have significant values for students associated with higher levels of academic research, academic integration, and active and collaborative learning. We hope that our community would be a multisemester cohort, linked classes, workshops, online resources, and connections among faculty, students, learning support staff, and advisors. We also want to move forward with our non-cognitive skills. That group is being led by Misty Kemp. And we are looking at the skills that Heather talked about. That includes self-efficacy, grit, study skills, and time management. The third piece then would be our information literacy. This team is headed by Michelle Piper, and her group is looking at how we can make sure that students can find that information. We typically know that the student, the information is out there, but the goal is helping students to be able to find the information, evaluate the information, and make sure to use it effectively. Three other subcommittees that we have are the Website Committee. Ian Call is the team leader for this group. If you haven't been to our website, it's great. It's qep.spcollege.edu. It's for staff, it's for faculty, it's for students, it's for the community. You can find out about our topic, and it's constantly evolving. So if you go on one day and then go back a week later, you will see new information. We have a marketing and social media group, and Lavanda Leonard is responsible for that group. That's making sure that our plan is moving forward and that we are making sure that our community at SPC knows that. Finally, we have a video subcommittee, Christian Marariarty, another faculty member, is responsible for that. If you were at our Fall Faculty, you saw the video that we created. If not, again, it's front and center on our website, so please go there and look at it. We are trying to make sure that we tell everyone what our topic is, but we are also trying to have a little fun with it as well. And hopefully you can see that in the video. So, one of the goals besides the research is making sure that we have made everyone aware of what we're doing. We want to make sure that the students, faculty, staff, the SPC community, and the outside community knows what we're doing. We think it's going to be an extremely positive movement forward for the college, and so we want to make sure to share that with them. Plus SACs wants to make sure that everyone knows as well. So first of all, we, we have decided to have some contests. We want to have fun. We have some student contests. Actually, our first contest was a slogan contest. It just ended and we had 77 entrants. I was very excited by that, and we have a team of judges who are currently deciding on the best slogan for the QEP. October 3rd, we will launch our logo contest, so some of our more creative students, visually creative students, will be able to participate in that. And finally, in January, we will have a video contest, and we hope that students will submit videos. So we're trying to engage students in that way. We have been attending and will continue to attend a number of community events. So we will be, Heather and I will be going to the Pinellas Education Articulation Committee Group this week to talk to them which, about our plan. This involves the SPC community as well as Pinellas County educators. We will also be attending the Career Advisory Meeting this week. And thanks to Francis New and Marvin Bright, they have put us in contact with the Rotary Organization. So we will be going there and spreading the word. Another big event for us will be All College Day on October 18th. We will have a presence there. You will see us there, you will hopefully come to our tent, have some fun, watch our video, get some SPC QEP swag. But again, it's a way for us to promote what we're doing. Besides that, we have attended a number of campus events, employee councils, faculty and student groups. They include things like the Florida Governance Association, the Dean's Council, online learning and services. We have also met with all the Student Life and Leadership Coordinators. Starting next week, we'll be meeting with the Student Government Association of Students. And so you can see that we're very busy meeting and talking with various groups. Finally, we believe that an online presence is critical to the success of this plan. So we have a social media campaign, thanks to Lisa Fisher and Rita Farlow. They have gotten us in touch with different outlets. So if you are online, you will see us. We have LinkedIn, Instagram, Twitter, Facebook. In fact, last week, we had our first Facebook Live. That was quite the experience. If you have never done it before, think twice. It is a little nerve-wracking realizing that you get one take for everyone to see, but it was a great experience. Heather, Michael Cruz, who's at the Learning Support Center in Tarpon, and I did it. We got over, almost 2,500 views, which was exciting and nerve-wracking at the same time. But it was a way for us to promote our slogan contest for our students. And again, 77 entrants is, is a pretty good number. So I'm excited because not only did they enter, but that means they know what the QEP topic is as well. We also, as I mentioned, will be updating our website regularly. And thanks to Chris Harvey, Susan Kalerik, we have been adding, adding some banners in my courses so that students know what's going on. So one of the great things about this that you can see, and just by the list of names that I've given you today, this is a true college effort. It's not one person, it's not even the 58 people that are on the committee, it's a team of wonderful people here at St. Petersburg College. So you may be wondering, well, what are you going to do next? I'm wondering myself that every day because it's constantly evolving. Just so you know, that we are continuing this fall semester to plan. We meet every other Friday at the Clearwater Campus, the QEC Committee, which is again made up of about 58 people, deans, provost, students, alumni, faculty, advisors, staff. So we will continue to meet every other Friday to make sure that we have our plan in place. In November, Michael Johnson, who is our SACs VP, will be coming to talk to us about how we're moving forward. We're very excited about that and already have some great plans to share with them. In December, we will be going to our annual meeting in Atlanta, Georgia, to get more information about how we can make sure that we're on board with the SAC standards. And in December, we hope to come back to you and give us, give you an updated report. In the spring, my goals are to be doing the writing and the promoting. So we're going to continue to move forward with our plan, write that plan, and make sure that we've, we've promoted it. We hope to come back in May to present that to you with the report due in August 2017 and then the site visit in October 2017. So while we've done a lot and it's been a great experience thus far, we still have a lot to do, and we appreciate your support. Any questions?
Questions?
Just wow.
Yeah.
Moving right along.
Very nice. No questions? All good? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Enrollment Strategy Plan One, Mr. Strickland and Mr. Chang.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Dr. Law, members of the board. I am Mark Strickland, Provost at the Seminole Campus. Co-presenting with me this morning is Jimmy Chang, Dean of Mathematics. So this is what we plan on focusing on this morning, is our enrollment plan, and it's in three components. Obviously, we're here in September, and our strategy this morning is to talk to you about what we're doing with regards to retention and progression, followed by our BOT meeting in October, which will have presenters talking about our enrollment strategies for the upcoming spring term, and then our November BOT, which will have an analysis about what type of programs we have moving forward in the future. So in order for us to take a look at what we're currently doing for all our students, all 31,138 of them, we've broke them out into three different groups, as you can see. We'll start with the new students, and that's important because those are the students that are degree-seeking, AAAS or certificate. Those students, we, we actually intentionally onboard them with a process called Smart Start. That's our orientation that lasts four weeks. Now you look at the 22,000, that looks like a big number of students to interact with. And Dean Chang will, will touch on what we're doing with Spark, which is an online platform where we interact with our students in the classroom, our faculty does that. And then we'll also talk to you about what we're doing with our readmit students. These are students that are returning from suspension or dismissal, that have been gone at least a year, and now they have returned to St. Pete College. So when we talk about fall-to-spring persistence, it's important to see where we've been. Take a look at 2012. You'll see in the fall of 2012, we started with 3,300 students. Those that made it to spring were at 2,800 or 84.6%. And then those that made it year over year to the following year actually were at 60.2%. Now I want you to pay close attention to 2014. That's when we had dev ed reform, that's when students were given the opportunity to opt out of developmental courses, and therefore you can see the persistence rate went down. It went all the way down to 56.2%. But you can see in the fall of 2015, the persistence rate went up. And that's important to note because we've begun our pathway conversations, which means that we're having students identify their career path earlier, and now we believe we're going to see significant increase. Just as an FYI, the national average for persistence from fall to fall is 48%. And we, we felt it was important that you knew that as well. Now if you look at the right-hand side of your slide, from fall 2015 to spring 2016, we lost 2,300 students. I'm pointing that out because about a third of those students actually were health-related students. They identified their nursing career. These were students who were in good academic standing, they had no holds, they were financially ineligible, and they actually just stopped coming to SPC. So when I talk about academic pathways, rather when Jimmy Chang talks about academic pathways here in a second, he's going to give you the details as to why we believe these pathways are actually presenting our students with the opportunity to stick around even if, in the event that they don't get into a nursing program.
So for the next few slides, we'll be, like to share with you four strategies that are currently going on right now to improve retention and progression. As Provost Strickland mentioned earlier, we would like to give you an update on the career and academic communities, some changes to advising and onboarding model, an update to the Academic Success Plan, and a new faculty tool, which has received really great feedback from our faculty, providing enhanced student information for them. So with the career and academic communities, right now, three of the communities are in pilot mode: education, health sciences and veterinary technology, and public safety policy, and legal studies. The other communities will be rolled out next year. These communities are designed to help the students get connected and stay connected to their guided pathways through coursework, advising, and completion of milestone activities, both in and out of the classroom. This will allow students to explore within their pathways and their communities and to be able to make informed decisions about their degree paths much sooner rather than later. And they will continue to receive out-of-class support from learning resources.
So it's important to take a look back at the college experience. Many of you know that every Wednesday, we give a report to our president, along with our administrators here to my right and everybody in the room, basically. But we start with the orientation, the onboarding piece, because we believe that's the most significant, most important piece where our students are going to get all of these various areas. So you, you start with the left-hand side. We make sure the student makes a career selection when they're in Smart Start. That's a four-week orientation, so we're going to make sure that they get all the tools they need to make a career selection. From there, it, it's a natural progression to the learning plan. We make sure they identify their learning plan, they follow it, they have a plan from not only today, but in the subsequent semesters. And then in the event that they fall into academic trouble, we have some interventions in place, Spark being one of them that Jimmy will talk about here in a moment. And lastly, the out-of-class support, which is our tutoring. It's an important piece of information to note that last year, we saw 16,000 students in our Learning Support Center. Those are students that went voluntarily to our Learning Support Commons to receive tutoring. Right now, we're in Week Four, and that number's at 7,000. That's an unduplicated number. So we believe we're seeing an upward trend in terms of students utilizing that resource. Now it's important for us to talk about our advising model and what's changed. In years past, students would walk in, they would just select a bunch of courses, it was essentially a free-for-all. They may have had a career in mind, maybe not, but they essentially took classes and continued to take those, not necessarily with the plan in mind. Those days are over. We need to make sure that the relationship is not transactional, but it's more relational. And it begins actually with business intelligence. We've actually loaded our student service advisors with the ability to seek information, to use business intelligence, to use it in a way that they can make an informed decision with the student. And we're also case-managing the students. That begins with Smart Start orientation. Remember I said it's four weeks? The advisor makes that relationship, or begins that relationship at the very beginning, and then they stick with that student. So there's a case-management approach. We're also empowering our student advisors to make decision in, in the event that they need to override the system and put a student in a class for the third attempt. But these are the things that we believe have changed the model. They're actually from the transactional piece to the relational advisor. And also, it's important to know that all of these advisors are now CDF certified, and that's essentially a credential that we- that we believe is important because it allows for our students to have the conversation with our advisors in regards to careers, and every single advisor at the college went through that training.
This past summer, the deans revised the academic success plan, and, uh, what you see here are the five main objectives of that plan, ranging from engagement strategy, engagement strategies in and beyond the classroom, all the way through career workforce pathways. And, uh, these objectives are being reported on through a series of webinars held throughout each semester, and the webinars are a collaboration between the deans and the faculty. So what you see here is a brand-new tool which rolled out, uh, this fall. Um, it's called Spark, which stands for SPC's Pertinent and Reliable Communicator, and, uh, this came out of Leadership SPC, um, in response to faculty requests to have additional information, uh, for their students. And, uh, this gives, uh, give you an example in terms of what's in the Spark, uh, system tool. And, uh, the student persona, um, faculty will be able to see quite a bit of information about their students, which includes a student readiness profile. And what that includes, uh, for example, would be a student's, uh, time management, uh, skills, their technology readiness, and other factors which may affect a student's chance for success. Now, one of the really nice features about Spark is that faculty can enter notes for their students in their own courses. But what this system also, um, offers is it allows faculty members to see notes from other faculty members from those students' other courses. So what this allows faculty members to see for their students is whether or not their students are struggling or are doing well in their other courses, and this would allow faculty members to collaborate and to reach out to the students where appropriate. And another tool that Spark has, uh, with spring registration taking place in less than two months, faculty will be able to help with the registration process, so they can see whether or not their students have registered for the following session, and if they haven't, they can, uh, provide a friendly nudge, a reminder, to, um, help them, uh, to register for the next semester. If you like, uh, there is a video, um, that we can show you in a subsequent meeting on the Spark, uh, tools. Uh, but in the meantime, are there any questions?
Uh, this was a great presentation. I, I think there's nothing more frustrating for a student than not understanding or having clear direction as to what they should be doing and where they need to go. And I think sometimes it takes that extra step to map it out, um, to encourage them, get them on the right path, and have them really moving forward aggressively, or more aggressively than they had been. Uh, and it's great to see that this is the direction we continue to move as a college, uh, and a Spark program as well. I mean, what a great resource for both the faculty, um, and advisors to, to see what's going on with each individual student, and what works and what doesn't work, uh, for them. This is great. Thank you.
Um, one question, uh, to go back to, I guess it's slide four, where you talked about the fall-to-spring attrition, and, uh, from fifteen to sixteen, twenty, you know, twenty-three hundred students didn't return. And you may have said this, maybe I just didn't catch it, if, what categories were those students in? Do we know, were they moving towards kind of the nursing, dental hygiene, some of the health-related programs, and...
Yes, sir. So a third of that twenty-three hundred were in health-related programs, i.e. dental hygiene, nursing. We can slice the data and pull every single student out of that twenty-three hundred cohort and give you that information. That's how powerful...
I don't know if that's necessary, but, you know, so, kinda, in my travels around town out and about, whether you're eating in a restaurant or whatever, somebody will notice your picture and, and say, hey, I've seen your picture, and, you know, you on the wall at St. Pete College, or whatever. And you engage in a conversation, and a lot of these folks that I've talked to are in kind of allied health, kind of dental hygiene, nursing programs. And what I've found through the conversations, and a lot of them, I thought, well, what's your plan? You know, and, and they'll say, well, you know, I'll probably go to SPC, and then probably either go to Kaiser or Galen or some... And I think there's a perception, and I don't know whether we're setting this up or whether it's just kind of hearsay, that those programs here are very limited, class size is limited, uh, very competitive. And I think some of these, some of these young adults get into this, and they just kind of automatically say, I'm just going to take the route to write the check, instead of trying to kind of compete through this. And I'm like, whoa, I said, let's, you know, let's talk about this a little bit more, and, you know, if... Are we very clear with the criteria and kind of how we set those programs up? And when, and when the, the folks are coming out of high school and deciding what they're going to do, do they understand upfront what it's going to take to get into those programs? Because I, I just kind of get the feeling from just a few pro, folks that I've talked to, that they just kind of go ahead and write themselves off as being able to compete to get into those, and, you know, go here for a little while, and then they're going to go somewhere else.
So, Mr. Chair, it, it's important to note that the three, uh, communities that we piloted, one, one is health, and the conversation now starts in the first semester, four weeks in, during that orientation process, to actually identify a career beyond nursing. We're in a health-related field, so we make the student select not only nursing as their health-related program, but several others, and we tell them that now. We're, we're, yeah, we told them in pockets, but it wasn't the entire population. We believe this will lend itself to better persistence going forward.
And I, I just had the opportunity to kind of, um, be counseled with some, a young person that I'm helping with our, in our, in our health fields. Part of the reason that I think folks might be intimidating, intimidated, is that to get in, you're talking about a three-seven, three-seven-four GPA to get in, um, to get into the nursing program. A little lower, I mean, but when I say a little, like, three-six, to get into the dental hygiene, we are extremely competitive in what we are accepting. So I, I can see where someone might be intimidated by that, but I can tell you, having, being someone who has not sat through an academic, um, I, I haven't done anything academic in a very long time. I can tell you, we have a fabulous way of onboarding people. I, I mean, and I sat there the whole hour myself, sitting there and listening, and I was very, very impressed. Um, I mean, I walked, granted, I walked away with a lot of questions, but I walked away with every tool to answer my questions.
We were quite surprised when, when we woke up one day and, and we had lost twenty-five-hundred students between fall and spring, and we weren't anticipating it. We didn't know who they were, we didn't have any information. We now have a way to reach all of them. Notice we've given faculty a tool, we have transactional counseling. They're not going to get away from us without us intervening in their lives and helping them make other choices or better choices, so...
Can I also say, I appreciate that forty-eight percent is maybe what the national average is, but that's still horrible. Can we not do it for that? Um, you know, I'm not even, I, I'm not even sure I like where we are, but I'm, you know, but forty-eight percent, that's kind of being above way too low for me, so, yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Nice information.
Next up is the consent agenda, there's a number of items on there. There's no old business and new business. I would like to take these as a, uh, as a group, uh, for a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, unless someone wants something called, you have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. Uh, there are no informational reports, uh, no public access or un-agenda items, no proposals to change the BOT rule manual. Uh, Mr. President?
I'm, I'm good, thanks very much.
Very good. All right, uh, that'll draw the meeting to a close. Next meeting date and site will be October eleventh at the downtown campus, and, uh, we are adjourned. And we're going to reopen, um, a collective bargaining workshop, and I'll go ahead and reopen that meeting at this point. Collective bargaining workshop for the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees, and I believe Denise Heekin?
Yes.
Will be informing us on that. Okay, well, let's just, I'll tell you what, let's take about a, a two-minute break. I know some people probably need a little bit of a break, and I noticed a couple, so we'll do that. And, uh, we'll be right back.